Okay, good morning, everybody. I know that we all want to hear from the candidates. So because we have limited time today, for the sake of time, I'm going to give just a really brief introduction of the candidates and then we'll jump right into questions. So Justine Burton is a caregiver for home instead and the founder and CEO of Stop Cacking, which serves children aging out of foster care. She's a member of Lawrence's Art and Stockman's and a former member of the Stockman's Museum. Mike Dever is the owner of Guidewire Consulting Firm. He does environmental consulting. He previously spent eight years on the City Commission, including two years as mayor, and has served in a number of other capacities, including on the Public Consentive Recovery Committee, the Lawrence Sister Cities Organization, and is a founding member of what is now the New Innovation Park. Greg Inkeldai is an attorney. He is currently serving in his first term in the City Commission, having been elected in 2019. That includes one year as mayor. Prior to serving on the City Commission, he served six years on the Land Commission and has served on the board of the Lawless and Miller Enterprises, including the Lawrence Chamber of Commerce, the Peaslee Technical Training Center, and the Fowler Community Services. Amber Sellers couldn't be here with us today because she had a work conflict. But she is the Director of Advocacy at the Trust Women Foundation and is currently serving in her first term as of the City Commission, having been elected in 2021. She has also served on the Lawrence人际关系 committee, the Kansas Health Equity Advisory Board, and is a member of the League of Voters. Portia Shipley is a property manager and is currently serving her first term in the City Commission, having been elected in 2019. That also includes one year as mayor. Prior to serving on the City Commission, she served as the Chair of the Lawrence Association of Neighborhoods and on the board for the Lawrence Preservation Alliance. And last but certainly not least, Dustin Summiller there is a high rap war veteran and a community activist. He serves the community in a number of ways, including on the People Relations Commission, the Community Emergency Response Team, and the Pickney Neighborhood Association. So welcome to all of our candidates this morning. Okay, so let's start with, just briefly, in one minute or less, what inspired you to run for City Commission? And what draws you to this service? Let's just start with Justine and to Al.
Okay, good morning, everyone. I feel it is time for a change in our community. And I've got a hard set around complaining. So I felt it was time for me to start participating and see about making some changes and sort of make some changes, to make those changes.
One of the main reasons I wanted to do this job as I studied and explained what else is this when I was kind of sidetracked into a whole other world in my free business, regardless of consulting. But I feel like I can bring some of the themes that parents had certainly who would be. And one of the things I saw the city was lacking was transparency to the public. A lot of important issues lately. And having been, having been in the position to be criticized or I knew that in the past people attacked more from the community. And so what I like to do is kind of bring back community conversations and communications with the public. So we can all have a better idea of where the city's heading and kind of be a part of the future of France.
I mean, I've been sort of for that. My initial foray into the government was sort of been around with that and of all who could understand the controversy. But that's sort of certainly there's where we can. But my motivation has always been the same, which is I love this town and I want for all of our children to want to stay here and for us to have opportunities for them as they age and as we age. And have things here that make it possible for them to live and thrive here. And I feel like that's a dead eye of the future. And I feel like this has been a way that I may contribute that concrete.
My name is Dustin Summiller. I'm a member of the Tyler Nation of Oklahoma. I come to you wearing the tribal colors, black and red, to represent my service, the way I was raised. I was raised to continue to serve my country and my community. And once I got done with the army, I came here and really went to KU to just get a good degree. It was a good job. But then after the time, I got involved with the community. I saw how much I enjoyed being part of these activities, being able to have the time to devote to meetings, be able to stay informed, and also wanting to be a part of the policymaking and accept the criticism. And one of the things that I feel like I bring uniquely to this is that in the United States of America, we constantly do after action work, constantly criticizing actions to make ourselves better. And one of our key rules is never take it personal. Never take anything personal because it's all about making the mission better. And so I can take those criticisms and not take them personally. Try to make the city's mission better in performing citizens and being accountable for all of the taxes and what we do and how we send that to the community. So thank you.
When they asked this question, we had this, I first of all, they asked this question back in the primary. And I answered it in a way that's slightly ironic today. It was just that capacity to pay food. And I talked about how change makes such a difference to this community. And that's really all I'm trying to do is try to make Lawrence a better place. Now, here today, we have the passage to go down. Who is another great citizen of Lawrence who's done so much to make this city great and put their life into it. And so, you know, I, you know, so many people in this room who's all, 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 does the same thing. And he should do it, trying to do that. So really, I just, you know, I think of people I thank. I think of people I promote. And I just want to, you know, step forward every day and try to make Lawrence a better place.
Some topic that I know a lot of folks that are concerned about and care about, the land development code. It is currently undergoing extensive evaluation and rewrite process. Hopefully, bring a new code to the City Commission next time. Identify one or two specific provisions that make this state of equally great barriers to development? And how would you like to see those provisions modified? And let's start with this town.
For myself, I've been saying this since 2017 when I first ran the city. So for me, looking through the code, one of the biggest things I really focused on is cluster housing projects under the section 20 at 702. In particular, I maybe want to focus on section B. So section one, where you can change versus we can only have detached dwellings where we want to attach dwell. If that's an allowance to density. I also think that it's saying that you should have no more lots that will be allowed in subdivision. And the section that I can do, I mean, B, that that actually strays what we can do in those subdivisions, the amount of people that we can pack in there, which consequently also affects the amount of people that are there to tax first. And we're talking about wanting to allow people to afford the tax for a nonchalant, ongoing future. We actually consider that the lot size. But that's how we determine their tax. Part of the permission on that. One of the other things I also would love to see is if section E, under General E, is removal of detached dwell units. I think there's a lot to be wholly type of housing allowed in cluster housing projects. So that might be one that the tax is killing us across this power, border, taxes, and affordability of people. I also think we should modify the outdoor area for each lot down 240 to 120 feet and allow the open space section for cluster housing projects to be increased. This way, you can have communities that are tight even but also have omni spaces for playgrounds, parks, and community gardens, which allow them to find affordability and build their communities. And also looking for new species of dwell considering that support the density prolonged. Those are my big things. I believe by developing code, I would realize that we can help with density issues for the village.
Well, I think a few people have hopefully said, I think the rewrite the development code would be the most important thing we need to see the mission. I guess I would answer question one as, why are we running again? The answer would be because I'm interested in development. You say this has a long lasting impact on our community going forward. And so, you know, Andy Soes on this committee along with them in the mood.
Some should think those are nice.
Yeah. And so I would say, I can't pinpoint specific provisions of code you'd like to change. There's a lot of things in that code. What would you rewrite that from the procedure? You know, Austin Dinski, I just mentioned very specifically. I appreciate that. Helping requirements. But, you know, I think it's certainly more than just leaking a few provisions. What we create over time is complex code that really hinders growth, hinders development, hinders creativity. As I like to say, you know, you can never build a whole lot of homes under our code. There's so many places you couldn't build under our code that we think were some of the best places in the town. So we need to rewrite the code in a way that allows developers to be creative, homeowners to be creative, and we have a procedure that allows that to be implemented.
Yeah, Mr. Pringle, I came in. And I agree that this was the most important thing, although I have some kind of career agreement and work very hard to push this through. And I also want to point out that as we're there, I was privileged to make plans to that committee. And I, you can imagine, maybe you just know there are some ideological frictions in our community. And certainly, there were people who wanted to stack that committee in a certain way. And I refused to do that. I chose to make it balanced. I worked really hard to do that. Again, Mr. Pringle, I was very glad that he accepted that opportunity and of course, Danny and others who were doing good work. And I have great faith in that process. And also very glad to have been able to appoint Mr. People that had that effort. Again, there were other commissioners who wanted that, but I knew everybody well that there was one person for that position and for that. So I do want to show that I can answer this question and I do have feelings about it. Again, I respect the process. So I don't continually try to influence it anyway. And I do need to do that here. But things I've noticed over the years that I thought were problematic, we seem to have some arbitrary setbacks that become an issue, especially within built projects. I would really like to see the community conversation around accessory housing, if that particularly will or could. Change our housing issues, our focal housing and aging and place issues. Parking, of course, I'm glad to hear from Rob Latta. A lot of our parking is antiquated. Our ideas of our parking are antiquated and frankly, lack of space. I think many of those are clear on that. And I just see, I got one more. Oh, so when they originally started, I kind of was hoping they would talk about something more like a design based skyline rather than strip zoning, different kinds of zoning that we have now. Some of the things that we hear from neighbors is really more about aesthetics and behavior. So if we stop talking about things like duplexes, sort of vilifying existing duplexes, plenty of people make fantastic duplexes. Some probably people here have done some fantastic projects with duplexes. So when we kind of can get back some of those old ideas about what can be done by, I think we are, we're going to really get somewhere, especially in these kind of fractious areas between neighborhoods and infill.
Those are all great points. I love the quote, you know, the news. I think there's irony here because I love the city commission years ago. One of the things I asked to be done was for us to rewrite the comprehensive plan. And so I'm sitting here surprised that I may have ended how it designed was as I envisioned it to be done for now. Because the problem with our fire plan, our visiting plan, that point obviously, it lacks in many ways. It disallows creativity and it enables bureaucracy in a way of culturizing or deprecating. And so the other one we wanted to use here was the lack of flexibility from our fighting departments and the lack of certainty of what things may be done. And so the two fundamental reasons we decided to set down this path of drafting these new reform codes and provisions that allow us to be more flexible is if we needed, it's our need for more people from the orders to build all these things, create more pipelines. And so I think it's great that we're talking about creative use of land because that's really all I want. When I travel around the country, I see what towns are small enough, they're mature, and I see what they're either laying with underdeveloped or re-balanced properties. And so I think we use the arguments and discussions already using the helpful. But I think everyone understands how important the hours to make the cost of living more insupportable. I think it allows you to have intergenerational families in which where you can have kids for this, you can have parents for this. But it produces a burden, a financial burden, the city can't reduce the infrastructure burden. So I wanted to focus on multifamily dwellings as well, creative multifamily dwellings, whether they're single duplexes, a nested duplexes, or more densely pitched, a single family of lots that are smaller than average, of all the things, family in areas where they're spread around a community where people can keep their dollars and focus on investment, needs of education. And also the setback with cars, what we said. There's some really cool things that we do to make this town more walkable, more lively, more transit focused. If we just remove some of the steps between doorway and their access to tracks or their access to home. And so I think many areas of the community benefit from reduction in setbacks and reducing reliance on cars. Fundamentally, that's really what I want to do is, I think if we minimize parking, because both of our codes are playing, then we're going to create a community that's a view reflection of that. And so right now, cars are what dictate how we do things. And in reality, we need to take a, I think, a summary of where we've been in the past to decide how we can reduce our production of cars in the future. And then also, I want to make sure we focus any goal that we have on transit center and pedestrian center constantly.
Well, as someone who's moved to this, the land development code, right, exactly. First, I'm not a home seller. I'm trying to tell you something in the situation for you that we can leave, I would leave myself. So at this point, what I would have to do actually is find out who the development codes are since they are changing and really go through those codes while I'm considering the answer on how I would work the process. Thank you.
So density was mentioned several times in the last case. In 2020, has a clearly stated priority for increased density within the city of Lawrence. And we've already seen that priority playing out in the evaluation of other projects in the rewrite of the development code. However, we also see some projects being criticized for being too dense, while others are not dense enough. What do you envision for increased density in Lawrence? Let's start with Brad Walker again.
You know, I think what I mentioned, as I said, we didn't build a whole lot of points. You know, there's much denser, the fall west side. And my other side of it is living in brownstones in the U campus. In a suite of brownstones, Boston, beautiful, luckily, and you can't build them anymore. And so you can, like I mentioned, you're going to have the community, those communities like Nashville, but then going to small communities like Fall, over across. And you see the creativity, the much denser, much smaller lots, pathways, you know, non-ball construction. There's a lot of creative ways you see developers building density. Actually, I want to see it helping you. I want, I want that be it a new development of our West or be it a redevelopment around downtown or other parts of the community, that folks can be creative and can create fun in different places that people want to live. The other side of that, I think, would be what Seth and people mentioned, our labor point, which is they can use and the ability to use the lots that we have and create more density on those lots. And so that's why I envision the code to allow, we code to allow. That's what I envision, you know, how the community is looking like. And I guess, you know, I do hope the codes also do go to focus on procedures that allow that. You know, to answer the question, what would the way our community look like over the place 2014 with the code? And then how are procedures to let that happen? Sometimes I think we let out procedures to get away from our goals. And it shouldn't be the opposite. We should have goals and the procedures should enhance those.
I'm the kind of guy that likes to really put a concrete picture of people and share on kind of note, but also it's scary for a lot of people. But my idea of density, in particular, I was thinking about it, 1741 Kentucky, that the Commissioner Minkelrod was saying, kind of like a brownstone, looks like that. It's in our town. And the beautiful homes to the parking off the street, wonderful sidewalks up front. I would like to see those more as we develop and for new code, also going westward, we're going to really need to contact people. And more mixed-use buildings amongst that. So if you have residences on top of the businesses, if there's one of the next, one of the follow questions is possibly, how are we going to encourage commercial use for our community? Well, you got to get people equipped online, online, problem solved, all done. Right? But that's the point. People who live there for convenience. And so it was five, six years ago, we weren't collecting sales tax. And so the legislature allowed our communities to have sales tax on online sales. Well, those two factors that actually compounded people buying online. And so we can need to make it more convenient for them to be able to shop. Need to be able to make it more convenient for them to follow me. And I'm getting people wheelchairs, people who have mobility issues, maybe they use a scooter or a car, or they might use little baskets to get to the market. Well, then they need to be close enough to do that. And the businesses and the residents only have to pack their bags for that. And that includes our streetways being conducive to bikes and walk and walk. Because as has been said, we're designing a city around cars. And I like to walk. And I don't mind riding because it's dangerous for me in my own neighborhood. And shared use paths on the roads are actually not worth it as well as a lot of our community in there want to say they are. And that's just the reality. That's something I want to look at as changing the way we do that with our development code and how we look for it. Thank you.
Yeah, it sounds like a lot of cases are how density and infill should be seen in the, partly I'm sure it's because of large, 2020. But I do think there's some distinction between the infill that we are trying to encourage here inside the city and how we expect things to develop as we annex. And it's always challenging, as everyone here knows, to do infill, partly because the neighborhoods are establishing, there's context and inevitably, there's some pushback on how to do it anyway. And that is always going to be the case. What I don't see happening is much, I think that probably one thing that this was referring to is redevelopment, which will also be challenging. But that project I think he's referring to is a great example of almost a whole block redeveloped with not really any argument. And probably three times density that was there previously. Another great project, I think, that includes mixed use and residential was the Opus Project on 23rd Street. Obviously, we should just completely develop, redevelop 23rd Street with ten more projects like that. And again, it's, it sailed through. It used the only use of the smart code that we have. And it was done with less parking. And they did a very good job of working with those neighborhoods and had absolutely no problems with this, a beautiful project in my view. And so it can be done, or you can get these things done. And I do agree that the changes, hopefully, our development code will make it easier. But those are the things that we should hope for. And certainly, I would like to see more of that. Probably some smaller neighborhoods would not like to hear me say the word redevelopment in the way that I just did. But I think in all honesty, we're going to have to take it seriously if we're going to be serious about density and making more efficient decisions for development. Ultimately, it's the taxpayer who pays for all the infrastructure. And if we don't densify, we're not going to be able to afford the neighborhood to build for now.
This is a good question. So there's a couple of ways, right, that I thought would have to be done and the ways to continue to densify. First of all, you want to maximize resource to sustain the areas of town. The sewer lines, water lines, already built. We need to have additional areas to use the existing infrastructure as is. So we can all pay for that in the starting point. And then we've got to remove the barriers to do so though by reducing the threat of oversight of historical areas. It may just be the car lanes or the, it could be highways, example, but not necessarily the structure. Or buildings that are single that are current, but we have really mostly permanent down to five blocks, even four blocks. Ways that we envision that double lives to be placed for them. And we don't have to spend a dime on what we introduce sewer lines or water lines. And that's what we can achieve by taxes on the disentwelling amount and hopefully decreasing overall. And I think the last time we did it is hopefully in the future. We need to focus on the density, the transit center, the development. And because we have lots of people coming to our community with cars, it's going to increase. It starts on our infrastructure, which will increase the cost of care and maintain. So ideally, we want to reduce our cost of housing and creating a community and building where people want to live, where they can walk and take tracks if they desire. Or at least have just one product, two. And then ironically, the kind of places we do that downtown, commercial areas that are unutilized, you know, say a Sunset or somewhere. Your team's right now, we started that route right from my first, my boat. And then finally, I think we need to replace unutilized, even industrial, unutilized, I guess. There's still lots of neighborhood out there, especially industrial sections that aren't going to be part of industrial park. And we, because they're of the size, the lots are just no longer for the types of industrial we don't use on a Thursday. But in the past, Lawrence has done some tremendous utilization and creative, creative densification in that town. These Lawrence have, example, golden locks. Just 15 years ago, that place was empty and full of pigeons and homeless people and people who are on the margins of life living in the alleyways of it. And now it's full of, like, four thousand houses. It's full of people. It's full of community. It's full of life. And now, it's full of, uh, four thousand, it's full of people, it's full of community, it's full of life, and that's what we want to be envisioning, let's say, old buildings, and we envision that. And part of that was, we also got the side of that, we got the L P C, we got nine Z blocks, we got ten street blocks, we got the art warehouse. Just by rebuilding, investing cities' money, and redoing brick streets on a couple of blocks, a few, a couple of blocks, and then doing this. That's all we had to do to create more energy and excitement, and that kind of, Lawrence, that's the kind of sound we do need to see as part of densification. So to be one of them here, and so we can live and play, enjoy working.
I think my, uh, is that when I hear people, um, about lawns, they're, they're not talking about all the lawns. And I'm thinking about all the lawns, North lawns, East lawns, well, which part can we look at? Um, when we talk about the walking and bicycle, I don't drive a bike. I, I, I'm only gonna be going a little bit of walk. So when we talk about these things, you know, I'm thinking, are we just talking about the young and hard livelihood, or are we talking about the old people that are around? I mean, everybody should be, this should be increased. And that's something that I don't hear. Um, and we talk about downtown as well. So there's more to lawns, there's downtown and west lawns. I'd like to see that, uh, and east lawns and north lawns at the same time, because those are part of lawns, but it seems like people have forgotten about that. And, you know, especially the Polo Building and stuff like that, we had to, that had to be done by somebody that doesn't live in lawns, that had to come from a general outside of lawns. In order to put something like that, it has to be developed in lawns. Because both buildings, like, that is about very involved parts, I just can't understand, with all the people that we have here in lawns that have that knowledge. Why is it that we have to bring somebody, or somebody that outside, has to come in and have a vision for lawns that lawns does not have for itself? So those are the things I think that they're going to be making about as well. As far as the GNC itself, and home, everything, um, I think that's, GNC could be a good thing. But also, I think you probably have to also look at, um, sometimes the. Some conditions as far as what you did, maybe dollars, or, you know, everybody, maybe it's not legal laws, but I guess, as far as housing and stuff, we need something. We need something that still that should be a better on how many buildings you put on the lot. So, that's my.
Okay, before we get to this next question, if any of you have pressures under big cars, you might start holding those up, so Bobby can come around, we can collect those, and start putting those. Um, okay, so the city recently approved the C I P, which included about seventy million over the life of the C I P for infrastructure to support Westwood Grove. What strategies would you like to see the city implement to build on that commitment and attract and encourage more private investment in lawns? And let's start this one with Courtney, and work our way on the same one.
Uh, yeah, fine. Uh, uh. To be honest, I, I think that that commitment is enormous, and some would even argue, uh, too much for the rate of return we can expect, especially if you go the way we're developing now. Um, I, I think the commission recognized it was a necessary investment, um, uh, perhaps not even part timely enough. Um, uh, in order to get more housing and infrastructure. Um, so to sort of, I feel like I may ask, but I think it's sometimes unnecessary for the nation out west. Uh, I think a little premature, maybe commitment like that, um, uh, until we see what the landscape of the owners up there are. Some people already know what the landscape of the owner, ownership out there is, and how, how that can unfold. Um, but I, I would like to let some more time go on, and Courtney, any sort of suggestion that, any kind of, uh, um. And sort of, other than the second million dollars we committed to it in the next year.
Um, let's see, uh, I'm really excited to see the C I P perfectly. I was, um, hoping that we could start to grow a little bit, um, just on a place to build standpoint. Now, last time, I served on the commission, we, uh, approved construction of a brand new, uh, sewage seeping plant. And, uh, it was a series of that seven dollars, but the city staff told us we were growing, we needed it. We wanted to service the residential, commercial, and industrial areas that are telling that we. That's the word to say. Um, well, you know, very little man explained, uh, this occurred since that time, that we've got an expensive facility that needs to be utilized. We must, that's a good structure, and I think, or it's, it's, it's a little utilizing, and it's costing money, I think, and part of our utility rates is a lot. So, um, I am really, but I have a question I didn't see about incentives, I saw this way, leaderships trying to curb common lawns, and so that's, that's when the tax rate has begun this. And I feel like, uh, it's really important that C I P goes on, and then we don't have to reduce it, but, you know, budget, and that's the way it is, but it's, it's committed from the city and indeed, yes. So the other people make commitments are, because we won't invest in ourselves, how can we expect others in this town, in downtown, that's the best, it's a hard place to work. It has been in the past, very many times, and people still wanna work there, and I wanna see that happen. So, um, we need to make sure that the one reason I want to say, I think that's the hardest job as commissioner, is the same staff, it's certainly whether or not their recommendations are accurate. And whether or not we've done the right stand, we need to be forward with it. Um, we need to make sure we have appropriate policy in place, procedures in place, to make the process of investing and working in lawns predictable, possible. And predictability is the number one concern for many people. Um, and it's, and it's the key, and you're not, if you wanna get a product done on budget on a sign, you need to know how much it's gonna cost, and how long it's gonna take, and otherwise, the housing is not be before the whole. It's gonna be overrun and cost for it to overrun, and so, we're gonna ensure ourselves are equipped by that, creating processes to be able to build as easy as possible. And finally, in code, we may be, I think, as Courtney pointed out, I think it's important to, to really, uh, go forward and not back. And so I think with the proper codes, planning in place, the planning staff, and the teams proper, and the city needs to be ready to be forward as soon as possible. Because, like, we, we delay any further, we miss out a lot of opportunity for growth, um, to here.
I feel like capital improvement has turned upside. Only specific areas are earmarked for technical improvement. I feel this is very small-minded, but there is no vision for all of lawns, and I've heard it said again, 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 all of lawns. Westwood Grove, for years, for years, East lawns have been called the ghetto. Obviously, the city commissioners, to a degree, did that, and it proved that in the, uh, in the budget. I would like to see more investment dollars spent in North lawns and East lawns, to prepare the streets and more businesses. Uh, in the unit plan, there's nothing significant in dollars for improvement in these areas, making them a vital part of the city of lawns. I'd like to see retail geared toward more mature digital, and bringing in some new tech companies. Again, go east shores, it could be a good thing, probably in our lawns, in our East lawns. But I think, uh, the last thing we need is more fast food and restaurants tomorrow, if we have another going. But, um, we do, I think we need to all come together sometime, or we can, uh. Get a mindset of there's more than, uh, one area of lawns that needs improvement, and, and I don't know how that's technically done. But I, I'm for all, all of lawns having a satisfaction, being satisfied, where they live at, and where they work at as well. But I think to be able to get taxes lower in lawns. Bring in more, more vital businesses, that, you know, businesses that, that can really come in and help bring that tax base down. That's all that would be, but it would be fast, you know, uh.
Obviously, I, I supported the, the seventh of development, I think it is, as the question implies, very, very good step in the long process that we need to make along. And I guess, as I read the question, maybe a couple of little things we need to do to, to make that happen, so we can attract more housing on more levels. First, we've done a few investigations, in Exalope, um, the S O P, uh, the Williams Project, uh, Close by Seventy, the Project, the Dogma Project, uh, Alphaya, Combridge West. So we annex those, but we haven't seen, you know, we haven't got those, uh, in the building spaces. And so we need to get that momentum going, to see projects definitely completion. Uh, so that if we can get that momentum going forward, so that folks in town, some of those developers, and out of town, some of those developers, see projects moving forward in a good way. Um, I think that we've talked about it multiple times, we need to do development go done, because I think that will, uh, create processes that, um. Both developers in town, and developers out of town will see, uh, that they can govern, be creative, and, and create places that people want to live, and, and have, you know, projects that they want. Um, for them, give them cost management, and so on. Um, and then by that, I say that we need to continue that, um, to continue to look at that C I P, and understand, um, where we can strategically invest to continue to grow, I would suggest, with the need. Um, and I say, I would say that could include, um, because of, particularly because of the biased interest rates, you know, things such as benefit districts. Um, using the city's bonding capacity, develop to weigh those costs, if we get global ways, maybe the approach to develop again. And how will we strategically use, uh, our capacity to again accomplish our goals. Um, gold plate moving forward, which, which probably includes housing and all by ones, uh, totally.
As I read this question, the first thing in my mind is, hey, if you talk about land development, we'll definitely, again. And I think that's kind of the criteria we are right now. It's, until this is done, we can't really say, which will be, which will be due. And so I, I'm really looking forward to being finished, and I know it's another year plus off. And so new commissioners will be in, so I, I don't know, if it's anyone's. And I wanna be a part of that process, something I really felt about is, we need to, my back was, it said, under this November, Commissioner Michael Biden specifically got flexibility for developers in coming in, in building apartments. And I've been glad to know that actually, I wanna say, it is logical now, but it's not very understandable, or lame, but it's myself, and it took a long time to make it forth through it, and we understand what's there. And if I'm having trouble with that, just trying to understand what is good for my community, what is business person, is in their community, maybe about that. I'm looking at that code, and so I really hope, and some of the module one modifications, look like it's a very logical code, super easy to understand, and gives a lot of flex. At least I think, certainly, it's that flexibility for people to understand what they do. And that's one in town west, that's, I think, the check there. Someone else brought up possible incentives packages, I think that's, again, face, case by case. Each one to determine if that's what it's at. But at this point, I don't even know, we, we need plans built out there, to get them built, and infrastructure to support it. So I got here before me, and I'm probably be, be mature to have that discussion at this point. And one of the things I really want to emphasize is green infrastructure, that we do this, and that's a development, that's part of our strong branding tactics. And it'll help, I believe, hopefully, create some other costs that are not very unnatural, uh, green, maybe even to these places that require a lot of water investment. Increases our need for a lot of treatment and a lot of delivery, pipe stream, and it'll help us, especially if we move out, that's why they're making more frontline, be able to control the damage of all these ones active, um, very much.
Okay, thank you, so I thought that, so, so far, we've been talking about questions that you all have in the country, I can work, we're all prepared. We're gonna switch the rules up a little bit, and I'll take some audience questions. Yes, clearly, uh, smart people in this, this group, and they ask, really, they have some questions, so, uh, we're trying to get to the venues, which we can have time for. Uh, the first one here, how prepared do you believe our city is for whatever influx, influx of new residents, the Panasonic, and related distance development, bringing? And how can we optimize on that opportunity? Let's, um, start with that scene, it's from Harvey Anderson.
I really don't think we're prepared at all. Um, I think there's something that we, that needs to be looked at. Um, as far as people coming into lawns, uh, for the Panasonic, um. Having, again, areas where people can live and, and work, and, uh, have their valleys, that's, that's something that I still don't think we're prepared for. Um. I see, at this point, that sometimes people wait until the flood comes before they start going and then about it. Um, I would think right now, we, at this point, we should start now, or yesterday. Uh, looking at ways that, when people come, that we already have those houses and places, uh, you know, looking at the schools and stuff that are in, because they're laws as well. Again, grocery stores. So I, I think that, far as being prepared, I really don't think lawns are prepared at all.
Silver, um, you know, I, I say, here on the commission, you see, uh, I said this, I'm not ready to say, like, working power to do my best, maybe, or it's, it's trackable, and it's attractive, and, um. I think, um, it's, um, accommodating place to live, or try to retire if you can. Uh, but, uh, one of the things we, we failed to do was provide housing that would, that, you know, maybe would be allowed us to respond, and maybe again, gave back some of the investment we already gave to the community. But I do think we're prepared in an industrial way, at a standpoint, I do believe we have lands, we have facilities, we have water supply, and water sources for all of those other. We call them supporting, um, corporations, manufacturing facilities, and whatever, uh, types of ancillary businesses that surround the Panasonic, they don't need to be right next door, they don't need to be three miles. I think we have some great opportunities on the east side of town, we've got other places in town where we can have office space. But from a residential standpoint, we're, we just need, we're, we're way behind in all, um, I, friends, right, we have an X land, it's in fact, and it's right next to my house, and very much appreciate that. And, um, how do you have X lands, um, in other parts of the community, but yet, nobody is really, uh, starting, you know, breaking ground and moving forward with those construction projects. I think we have certainty, and the variability of the planning process is part of it, that I'd like to see mentioned.
Um, uh, yeah, our, our best hope, uh, I think is to get the secondary vendors in our first phase, and I wanna, I recognize, particularly the work that the chamber and city staff have been doing to try to determine. Who those, um, vendors are, and, um, and do everything they can to attract them to our area. Um, I, I do wanna say, however, even the, the expert, the, the chamber hire has sort of initially said, we're not gonna hit a giant influx of people building here, we're gonna get a very small number of, like, engineering. But the people building the factory right now, they're not gonna move here, they're gonna be here a couple of years, and then they're gonna move on back to whatever, new factory they're gonna build. Um, the study that the school research did, all research showed that they don't anticipate any unit, or influx of people in terms of residential needs, or by the, from the Panasonic plan. Um, so I, I am not saying it's not important, I'm just not, maybe I'm panicked about the residential part as, uh, uh, per figure of a giant influx of people. But the, the resident, the, uh, industrial is the absolutely most important thing that we need to be building on, and I agree with that. The chambers work very hard on that, and so the city staff will continue to do that, so we can have certain kind of opportunities that we can.
So I was also referring to the July twelve planning commission presentation by Mr. Richardson, the best kind of non-development, and so there's not about the. Four thousand dollars that will come out of Panasonic, and the possible four thousand support requests throughout the region. And that because of the kind of batteries that are being made, uh, the big coal batteries, like the cars, like small point five millimeters, twenty seven meter batteries that are making that, it's kind of the climate, what was it, a billion batteries a year, that's a prediction. But Rowan, who maybe had six, he said maybe need whole businesses that be able to be different. It's not gonna be some massive system that's, uh, you know, regionally supported. That doesn't mean we can capitalize on that, and that's what I think about, uh, when we talk about mixed use development and not just industrial, but maybe we're imagining what will be from industrial, this will be smaller type of development that these companies that will be supported, the Panasonic plan. It won't necessarily be large deal industrial, uh, footprints to pull off what they're doing. Some of them are doing this, apparently, working on it now, and it's essentially four months' level production. They can make these and deliver out of these places that they're doing right now, they're kind of old key, they say they wanna bring too much attention to themselves, according to Mr. Richardson, again. But we don't need massive footprints to generate the support of production that's already in place right now. And so the thought that we are capitalizing or optimizing it is undermined by Mr. Richardson, who, 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 who,[774.02]
And, you know, y'all made the better of when you landed Panasonic was the city of Oklahoma that had another electric battery plant. And Panasonic were really interested in locating next to a existing battery plant. Because of workflows, uh, because of knowledge base. And so, you know, I think one of the things that the government is probably promised, continues to look at is, what's that next project that wants to come to this region? He does Panasonic, he's here, not Panasonic itself, but something related to that. And we need to be ready to capture that next project and have industrial land ready to deal with that.
Okay, let's switch gears a little bit. Uh, we got a question about the pallet village. According to the reports from the world, the cost of land demo infrastructure fencing and pallet homes is approximately 2.5 million. This equates to about $50,000 per structure before we start running a village. Do you believe this is a wise investment? Or do you think we should have invested in more permanent structures? And do you think this will provide a good return on investment? Uh, I know, um, Justin has some time constraints, so we'll start with you again, so you can answer this one before you leave. And then, uh, maybe we'll jump down the rack and have a reverse.
Okay, now I don't know much about the pallet village, I don't know what this is supposed to be for.
This is, uh, pallet village is being, uh, developed to help house some of the unhoused community.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Good question.
Uh, according to the reports from the world, the cost of land demo infrastructure fencing and pallet homes is approximately 2.5 million. This equates to about $50,000 per structure before we start running a village. Do you believe this is a wise investment? Or do you think we should have invested in more permanent structures? And do you think this will provide a good return on investment?
Well, I, I don't really think that spending that much money is necessary. We have a lot of, uh, like the large shelter. I think those all should be under one, one umbrella. Because having large shelter doing one thing and then having somebody else on the other end doing something else, I think probably could maybe reduce the, reduce the cost. I don't think building, um, these pallets are necessarily an investor. Because who's gonna be paying, you know, this city is gonna be paying taxes and on the land, because nobody else, the homeless, not gonna be doing that. So I think there should be another way. I think it's just money that's being spent because nobody else is going to do it. But I, yeah, so this is, having a homeless, I mean, this, it's a big, it's a big problem. Um, you know, they're not going anywhere, people are gonna be here, their individual, uh, their needs, their needs need to be met. But in the long run, we have to think about as far as dollars, how much equity should be spent? And I don't think at this time that something like that is viable or should be done. I think they should find, uh, go back to the table and find another way to, to do this. But for me, I think they should put everything with large shelter and everybody working together because we already have a lot of resources in large portable homes. And work it that way before they jump out and start spending 25 million dollars or something else.
Um, well, clearly I support it because I vote for it. Um, and, and I do believe it's part of our, um, how large a plant. And I'll say a couple of things about the cost in particular, um, and then how it relates to the entire plan. Of course, I would say as relates to the entire plan, um, you know, we have developed, we need the county, we need the city, we need social services, a, a complex plan that goes from emergency housing to portable housing. And we've been investing strategically in each of those, uh, components. You know, one of those components is emergency sheltering, uh, which is availability and the community shelter. You probably see some separate data for the community shelter. But then it goes towards to short-term housing, transitional housing. You've seen some investments in that out of county, in other counties and others. And then to a portable housing where we, uh, now, uh, between the city and the county, um, with our office business, homeowners, the housing authority, habitat, et cetera. We have 850 units of portable housing in various steps of, of that process. And so we're invested in each of those levels. And so the investment here, um, is an investment in our, our emergency housing situation. I think it's a vital part of our plan, as we said a lot of times yesterday. But, um, you know, a big part of that is the land, and that land, and then the, preparing that land to be used. And so when the power bill gets closed, and you think for that land, it will be true, um, some of those, um, some of that value, either in long-term portable housing, in other housing. And so I do believe it's the right investment at this time to do.
So we, there's a body sending 70 million to CIP for expanding the city west, but it's uncrankable. There was never gonna have a commission over there for that, and they're developing in town slot to deal with homelessness. It'll be a group, but I'm, I'm with it because I believe that's a different question about visitor. And we have to develop that, and it always has a mission cost, also put in the structures. And I live in the neighborhood, a while by the side, there's no A or M exercise about. I was under the impression this is a three to five year project, this is not a long-term. And so we don't want to bring construction there, and the neighborhood is gonna be implicit, understanding that this is a time for everything, that eventually it's gonna be picked up and moved to another part of the community. That was what the presentation said back in, uh, March, January. And I believe it's okay to build the infrastructure there and to pay for it now, in the hopes that it'll maybe be used for something else. And I'll tell you right now, great that Commissioner McCallum, I was thinking, our residents are already starting some type of part. So we kind of, we're gonna have that discussion. And I believe this policy will succeed, my son lives across the street. And if it doesn't succeed, we're thinking we're gonna prove a little bit of fallout. And that is whoever we're leaving here on, they're expecting us to go with us. And if we're leaving there, it grows, it's happening, I'm trying to leave it here. But all on the sea, we have a large influx of unhoused in our neighborhood, across the entire neighborhood, in every tree line, in every park, more than what was happening before the pandemic. And if this doesn't go off, you see one on some, one three on the neighborhood. And we need then have a place to help, we need a pipeline to get those who wish to have help, to be able to get into that pipeline. And so I support the sending of this, I support the idea behind it.
Um, yes, I think it just by a broad sense. We would respect previous to now our, our, our plans and our commitment to this community to take greater responsibility and leadership role in, um, solving some of these issues. Our, our, our policy was to give the shelter $200,000 and probably good. And that didn't work, it doesn't work. And what we're doing now is filling the gaps and finding where the overlap is. We are meeting every day, all day about the issue with all of our partners, or some, which, uh, which are people I mentioned, um, the community, or the family, probably our, our best partner these days. We are, uh, we're being constantly to equally share the responsibility. That's something that is very new in our relationship. Um, and both city and county are committed to, um, moving the needle on this. What I hear from people in the community, um, the truth is they just, we just don't wanna see it anymore. We just don't wanna see it outside, we don't wanna see it in our free life, we don't wanna see it downtown. These things were always happening, they were just happening inside the shelter room, couldn't see them. And now partly because of COVID and this, partly because people are coming here from other places, we are seeing things uh, we don't wanna see, we're seeing that here, we don't wanna see, uh, we're seeing trash and gas camping in every part of the town. If you want the camping in every part of the town on all of our trails, one of our greatest access, which community, our part of trail. If you wanna see that ended, then we need this pallet village to expand the capacity and put people in safely. And, uh, but interesting comparison, that, that's who made, you know, that we're spending on infrastructure, uh, to expand that west and, and what a comparatively small amount of money is there. Not, I've made that comparison, but I appreciate it in terms of context. Um, so I think it's an important investment, and I think once we get all of our tree line, all of our gaps, uh, it will still be a city asset, even if it's not, uh, a shelter, um, it will, the land will still be a city asset. So, um, it's, it's never a bad investment to buy land, I'm sure everybody needs to remember that.
So, um, I wanna make it clear that the city mores are just single owner of the land in downtown. Just, just, just to be clear. We have plenty of land we could put in shelter at if we wanted to. I'm uncertain as to why, who chose to buy these land, demolish, you know, currently utilizing these buildings and could have been used for other services, but industrial scale buildings. And foundations were dismantled and poured down and put on a hill. And sitting now all in Florida, and, um, there are costs beyond the construction, beyond the 200 hours of this to the community, to painting the neighborhood who had this put under doorstep when the city and the county had many other viable choices in place. So I agree wholeheartedly with these pallet shelters, we need some sort of temporary housing for the people who are living on the streets, in our, in our, in our parks, in our alleys, and in tents, in unsanctioned camp or sanctioned, that we need places to be safe. But there's also space elsewhere, and as part of the commission to build the community shelter, that zones, that pushes through the community and make people understand we needed to be involved in the process. And part of that, I think, was in the town as well, is that we needed digital services, we had additional land there to help coordinate and capitalize on services that are available in shelter, and the people who are there to help those people. And so I feel like utilization of the resources could be done better specifically, I believe we should put them at the shelter because we had the space and we had the people who are smart enough to help those people, who are dating problems. Instead, we repositioned it, put it in some area that already is already full of fancy houses and houses. You know, I've been dealing with this myself for years, I have been managing and trying to help people who are unhoused. We did move adjacent land there, all around the hospital, on a personal level, I've seen what we can do for the neighborhood when we allow people to escape wherever they want to. And I believe that, uh, that's part of the problem. And right now, um, I believe that we need this housing, so that according to what I've been told by the officials, is that once we have this housing, we are going to enforce our urban camping ban. We're gonna enforce some of the rules we already have on the books, and it's only if we cater to the core of 20,000 that need to finish, when we get back to live their lives. And certainly these people who need mental health, drug addiction counseling, and just needs to learn how to get a job, be it prior to like, succeed at first or second. These are the things that we can do, putting into that building is not the real decision. But it's gonna be a question of speed. What we need to is follow through and complete an action plan going forward. So we need to move, you know, what city's doing, where it's going, how we're gonna be.
Thank you so much, Charlotte. Uh, we're running short on time, so that will be all of the audience's questions that we'll have time for. Justin, I know you have time, so if you need to go, thank you so much.
Thank you all.
We leave, uh, just one last question before we wrap up, uh, this morning. We do one more round of applause for Justin. Um, before we close, uh, for the, the main candidates, in one minute or less, give us your elevator pitch. Why should the votes in this room vote for you? Okay, let's just start with mine and go down the table.
Thanks for having us today, I appreciate it, we have a good time, you talk about why I don't collect it. I had this usual knowledge in the city of the way it was, the way it is, I've been here for almost my whole life, uh, 40 years or more. I love Lawrence, I came here, he won, published a tremendous success, and I still think it is that I think we believe that they have our businesses, are taking care of our people, of employees and us specifically. I've managed my own business for 25 years, uh, I managed the city, proved to you how to make money from crisis. We, uh, didn't have to cover any jobs, we didn't have to defend services, I don't think many of us felt the city's impact during that tough time. And I feel like that was a fun, interesting experience, I feel like, um, brought a lot of, um, sincerity and complexity to the job, and really, uh, makes you appreciate, uh, the tax base anymore. Um, I've got, uh, a lot of the knowledge and budgets I've managed by my own way, so many people question me every year. I've always managed this budget for eight years, I feel like that's important, kind of all about, I use the play, the rules, the laws, and with the cities across the country, I have a chance, how, uh, jurisdictions work. And I try to, uh, follow the rules and behave appropriately whenever possible, so that we, and across, I slept. Um, I have a passion helping others, um, I like listening to solid problems, I don't really like spoken speaking, you know, without that very, really too like talking to people, I'm more than I enjoy learning and seeing. I, I've studied the housing problem, specifically the lab housing. Right now, you know, there's really no home sale doors for under $300,000. When I moved the doors, I spent $220,000, that's everything I had to take here, without people getting in here for a few years. So there's no houses on the road, and he need to address poor and poor housing, introductory housing, people who are just moving in, who want to stay, meaning that, and I wanna help guide this community to be a quote-unquote better community, you know, a place where people can, I want to supervise housing, so people can stay, work and hustle. And then finally, um, I'd like to exist and possibly forward with our current unhoused population problem. Um, I have been talking to dozens of experts in the field all across the country, and even our own experts here. We have all the tools in place, we just need commitment, a passion, and the guts to move forward. To do what's right, all, I don't feel like I'm capable of understanding the, the heart of the problem, who would be able, um, giving what we're saving by these assets, so we kind of solve it, we do the best that we can, so thank you.
So, um, I think many of us have the same location we should be here, and our goals are very similar. I think what makes me a little bit needy, um, is that as we make sure our, our major priority to build relationships and create dialogue, um, with groups that are disparate, um, I think I can be a bridge between some of the communities that disagree on development or development because, you know, has its issues. Our community is always divided in some way, and we need more people who are willing to have those conversations and root those gaps. Um, I believe on it, and very good at that. I think, um, we have all the plans in place, we've done a lot of the work already, and we need to see it further, um, from our homeless plan, Plan 2040, downtown master plan. All of these meetings that we have set up for and that we have engaged heavily with the public, we need to move forward, like, we need to operationalize. And, um, we just need people who are committed to follow and improve. And I believe I can do that, and I can do that by communicating with all kinds of people and working them all together.
I'm bold, I'm brash, I was the one that heard every single one of you before I even made it. And my level of dedication to communities to this day, away from the morning looking at what were the meetings for Friday day, and start watching them, I watched the planning commission meetings every time, I know what's going on. I studied the code, I understand the city code, land developer code, I studied the comprehensive plan. This is my job, and I don't get paid to do it because I, I enjoy it. For me, the chaos and conflict is where I fly, that's why I enjoy the economy so much. And the city commission, and that room sometimes, I'm like, ah, I'm that hole. And I want to be in that seat, one of the many commissioners, helping make the decisions that the city is willing to listen to, maybe some person. I consider that I can get criticism, but I'm also willing to learn, I recognize I don't know everything, and I have a lot to learn. I ran in 2017, and I learned a lot. I think people will do something at their front door and take an hour of my time, but that means they know, they think you have something, but I'm in the back, and now this is my field, I'm gonna teach it. And I was always grateful for those experiences, and I'm willing to look forward to coming in, going forward. Some people in the room have sent in this campaign this year, I've shut it down, I'm not with them, thank you. And that's what I would be doing this city commission, and I'll always listen, I'll always read my mind, because I love this community, this community is everyone, it's like we love all the people, I don't serve them as a pass, thank you.
Well, I'll talk, I said it might not always be the case, but you get three votes. So I think there's a lot of good commissions, uh, a lot of reasons to go forward. People have been stable, and, uh, you know, if you wanna vote for Dean, uh, do that. But, uh, you know, when, when I saw it four years ago, again, this side wanted to try to make, make Lawrence a better place. About four months in, gold desk, and, um, spent, went half years, um, and looking for that. But during that time, we did create a lot of plans, as Spohley said, and as I mentioned earlier, the reason I'm running again, probably is up with those, which is the fun that you can yell at and criticize all the time. I don't know if I cried on that, but, uh, it is not, I can use it there. But we do have a lot of plans we need to fit, uh, and that's why I'm running again. I want to finish developing those, I think that's so important. I wanted to, um, you know, finish our housing, uh, plan, homeless plan. I wanted to finish the effort to support housing. I wanted to finish, uh, you know, West Canadian Development, I wanted to finish the Chuzon to be a housing build. I wanted to finish a downtown development plan with some of the big projects I've done in downtown. So it's a lot of, um, things that are in process and are not yet finished, and I want to be qualified to finish, and I want to continue.
Finally, thank you, Danny Ross from the Panasonic, buddy of mine, we were able to get it. All right, thank you. And first, I also need to thank some of the people here today, and that's which, uh, we're here, and we're in the community. And I'd also thank all of you for being there, and just, uh, a couple of reminders, the deadline's red through the 12th, October 17th. Advance voting begins on the 18th, and a general election is November 7th. So please get out and vote, and thank you, and be.